Okay, we're on. So I call this meeting to order. This meeting of the City Council is hereby called to order. Pledge of allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Clerk please call the roll.
Mikhail.
Present.
Budmats.
Present.
O'Brien.
Here.
Veneziano.
Here.
Bessesi.
Here.
Reyes.
Here.
Sunayka.
Here.
Okay. With, I guess that's everybody's here, seven are present. And the mayor is absent. We have a quorum. We gotta approve the minutes. We have three sets of minutes. The first one is August 17th. Need a motion to approve the minutes.
Some of them.
Alden Sunayka and Alderman O'Brien. Are there any corrections, additions, or deletions? Seeing none, the question is, shall the minutes be approved?
Aye.
Go ahead. Nope.
It's a voice.
Oh, this isn't all in favor one. Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. First set are approved. Now we'll move on to the minutes of the August 24th City Council meeting. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Some of them.
Alderman Sunayka, Alderman Budmats. Are there any corrections, additions, or deletions to the minutes? Okay. Seeing none, the question is, shall the minutes be approved? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. That's, that motion's unanimous. Next is the city, is the minutes for the September 1st special City Council meeting. Is there a motion for that?
Some of them.
Second.
Alderman Sunayka, Alderman Veneziano. With the second, are there any corrections, additions, or deletions? Seeing none, the question is, shall the minutes be approved? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Okay. It's also unanimous. Moving on, there is nothing to deviate, so we are going to go past that. There will be no mayor's report tonight. Are there any ward reports?
Yes.
Alderman Sunayka.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. The first is that the Environmental Committee voted on its major initiatives at the September 7th, 2021 meeting for the next 12 months, which focuses on community outreach, education, and the development of a sustainability and climate action plan. Present at the meeting was a Ward 7 resident that was requesting safe pedestrian and bicycle passage at the intersection of Euclid and Hicks Road. This is the same intersection for which the City Council approved an ITEP grant application, and I am delighted to announce that the City of Rolling Meadows was awarded grant funding for this project. And it's not every day that a resident asks for a major road construction project and the city agrees that same day to pursue that same project. This does speak to the importance of this council's public works and community developments' proactive approach to bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure. The community and Ward 7 residents specifically value these investments. As an active member of the Regional Northwest Municipal Conference Transportation and Bike and Ped Committees, I will continue to share opportunities for expanded transportation, network funding. Additionally, I want to thank the Rolling Meadows Environmental Committee, the Rolling Meadows Park District, and the Rolling Meadows Historical Society, and friends of all three organizations for planning the annual duck race fundraiser which took place last Friday, September 10th. The all-volunteer environmental committee works hard to ensure that its activities, such as native plantings and Earth Day salt pre-cleanup events, are funded through this event rather, through allocated tax funds. And lastly, I have an update from the City Manager Hiring Committee. At this time, the Hiring Committee narrowed the pool of qualified applicants to five candidates. The committee will begin preliminary screenings of the five candidates over the next two weeks, and then pending screening, those candidates will move forward to the City Council for full consideration. The City Council will be expected to rank the candidates and provide feedback to the Hiring Committee. And then the last phase will be a final round of individual interviews of the top three candidates conducted by the City Council in full to select the new city manager for Rolling Meadows. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Sunayka. Is there any other ward reports? Alderman O'Brien?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. A little bit longer one here, but I'll go pretty quickly as I can. Update from the Economic Development Committee last night. It was a very beneficial meeting. We got a lot accomplished. Real quickly through here, we received an update on Next Level Northwest Program, which is the sponsorship program for a new business in the area that a mentor has assigned, Shannon Thomas from Knockout Prince, providing an update on what a positive experience it was, and couldn't speak highly enough about Martha and the program. And then Martha did inform the EDC that two new members Comcast and Wintrust have joined the Next Level Northwest Board. So that does show the collaboration between private and public collaboration for that initiative with Next Level Northwest. So that was great to see that Comcast and Wintrust as large employer groups have joined the larger board. At our past meeting, the EDC did request an update, or if we could continue to get numbers, on current retail and restaurant vacancies within the city. And Martha Corner provided that is, based off the available information, square footage is that we're estimated to be about 7.1% vacancy rating, so meaning 93% of retail and restaurant space is filled. That does not include gas stations, um, gas stations or industrial areas, because those were not readily available. The national average is 7.3. And then, we know we can't do it, but if we were to remove Sam's Club, that brings our average down to 3% based on square footage, so we would be far below the national average. So we will continue to get those updates. I can't remember if we asked quarterly. I don't think they would change much monthly, so maybe going forward, EDC would get those quarterly. The new restaurant and retail incentive that council approved about, I think it was our last meeting, was the official second reading. We've already had one applicant reach out to Martha on, as well as it's being posted everywhere on social media, working with local landowners or landlords to post it on the vacant spaces that are around town. Two updates on goals. We did defer most of our goal discussion because we barely had, we just had five people, so we were just at a quorum. But we had two guest speakers come in from the chamber co-op that we've talked about, because one of the concerns that we talked about was the industrial park. Can we leverage the new relationship we have with Palatine Mount Prospect? So John Riddler and Steve Gauss came in and spoke to us, and they said absolutely. We did a little bit of a brainstorming session there. They are all game for this. What their recommendation is, and they're gonna take the lead on working with Martha, is by the end of the year, because we're going into fourth quarter, they're gonna put together a strategy meeting with the applicable parties. So it would be Martha themselves, Martha's counterparts from Arlington, from Mount Prospect. They said it's not so unusual that we're in this situation. And then based on that, they said there are eight members of the co-op chamber that are also landowners, and some of it being industrial space. So that they wanna make sure are at the table too. So we're dealing with a lot of the landowners as well. The other update on the goal, we had five goals. The second update on the goal was the Walmart Shopping Center and the outlets. We did talk about doing like some updates there from a visual perspective. So Joe Ellen provided an update on that. Had reached out to Burke Engineering to see what it would cost to provide us a visual rendering of what could be brought to that to current. So it is gonna be coming by council. Last night it was a 5-0 straw poll for unanimous endorsement to move that to the council to allocate and spend the roughly $8,000 to allow Burke to move forward with two graphical renderings of layouts of the parking lot, how that could be done. And then if it gets approved by the council, Burke would go back and do that. Then the next step would be we engage the eight business owners over there. Because as we learned last time, there's eight landowners in that subdivision or in that area. That's the next step. If everything goes according to plan, we would engage those people. We did not talk timeframes, but I'm gonna guess here, just based on the discussion, probably first quarter next year. Because Burke has to take due diligence. We'd have to approve things, and then so it'd be early next year. We did talk, since we had John and Steve there. It is not unusual to have eight landowners in a complex like that. Almost every major shopping center around the area is not just one owner, unless you're talking a Woodfield or an Oakbrook. But anything really with strip mall type thing, or big box stores, are all separate landowners. So that's not so unusual. The good thing though, is that hopefully most of the landowners are in the area. If not, that could be something that slows the process down, is if you're dealing with landlords that live in Connecticut, or somewhere clear across the path, because they don't have any vested interest regrettably. The last piece, and we were talking about this before, is it has not been finalized yet. Details will still be coming, but the Rolling Meadows Shopping Center, which is the one right here by McDonald's and Rep's Place, is gonna host a, I wanna get the name right, Trick or Treat, and Trick or Treat Trail and Halloween Fest on Saturday, October 30th, from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., including trunk or treat games. I think I saw a hayride someplace. But we did confirm, Lori last night did confirm, once everything is finalized, it'll be on the city electronic sites, the social media outlets, as well as in the monthly water bill, or the utility statement. So busy meeting, but we got a lot of steps moved forward.
Thank you. Any other ward reports? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move on to opening the meeting to the public for 20 minutes. In order to secure, there is one signature on the sign-in sheet tonight. In order to secure the rights of the citizens of the city to be fair and just representation before their elected officials, and to guarantee to the elected officials an order and dignified form in which to conduct the city's business. No person shall be allowed to engage in any activity that shall disturb, disrupt the orderly proceedings of the City Council. Per rules of procedures, the public is to address the City Council, and the fact that no member of the City Council responds does not mean that the City Council, or any member thereof, agrees or disagrees with the comment. In order to attain this objectives, the following rules of conduct are hereby established. Any person who seeks to address the City Council at this time for public comment shall be permitted to speak only upon recognition from the presiding officer, and such persons shall adhere to the following provisions. Each person addressing the City Council shall state their name and address, or their name for the record. Each person shall be granted no more than five minutes of the allowed 20 minutes in order to address the City Council. Questions and/or commentary shall be limited to city business. Comments supporting or opposing a nominated person's candidacy for elective office of the city shall be out of order. Commentary shall be directed to the presiding officer unless the presiding officer permits the individual to address the city members or other city officials present. Discussion shall take place in a professional manner, manage, sorry. Discussion shall take place in a professional manner which displays mutual respect, and profanity shall not be used in any form or manner. As I said, there is one person on here, Mr. Dale Engelking.
Good evening, everybody. I'm here to talk about, I haven't been here for a while. I've been away, so I don't know what it's, what they've been doing as far as looking for a new city manager. The last I knew or heard, there were three, three members, the mayor and three other people, that were gonna conduct a study or take in resumes from applicants that are applying for the job. I'm just here, I don't know, I mean, I heard that it was voted down that we get an outside professional firm to come in because of the money that it would cost. And no disrespect to any of the ones that are on the committee, but what expertise or do they have in vetting potential city managers? Therefore, I think that we should spend the city money to get a professional outside firm, a recruiting office, and go through it that way. I wasn't here to know how it got voted up or down, but I would assume down, because you guys appointed three of your own. I heard one being the mayor, which that's quite disturbing. You would think you'd get neutral people, you know, to get the best qualified person. That's what I wanna tell you guys tonight, that I think it would be money well spent. Because in the end, taxpayers are gonna come up with probably hundreds of thousands, if not millions, to settle this case. So the few dollars that it's gonna take to get a professional firm, I think is money well spent. With that being said, I'd like to congratulate Melissa Gallagher, wherever she's at, she's back there. I got the city news and views, and the city has earned the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting 34 years in a row, and is a four-time recipient of distinguished budget presentation awards. Earning the Triple Crown confirms Rolling Meadows longstanding commitment to the highest standards of government budgeting and accounting that goes back more than 30 years. That's Melissa Gallagher, that's, that I wanna congratulate for that. And knowing that she's a great financial person for the city, and she's taken over for our old city manager, I nominate her to be the city manager. She has, she has more expertise in this city than probably any one of us. And I haven't talked to her about it, you know, but she, she could, she could, you know, get the people that we need in the financial end of it, because she's worked that excellent, as I told you guys. And she knows how the city works. You know, she's, she's done it while Barry's been gone, and for years before. So I know it doesn't mean much, but I would nominate her to be one in the running. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir. Dale was the only one on the, on there, so we will now move on to pending business. The first and only item in pending business is item A. Ordinance number 2145. Approve an ordinance confirming and extending the state of emergency within the City of Rolling Meadows due to COVID-19 pandemic. It's the second reading. Is there any motion to adopt the ordinance?
Some of them.
Alderman Budmats, Alderman Sunayka, for the second. Any discussion? Seeing none, the question is, shall the ordinance be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
O'Brien.
Yes.
Veneziano.
Yes.
Bessesi.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
Sunayka.
Yes.
Mikhail.
Yes.
Budmats.
Yes.
Okay. Unanimous vote for that. Moving on, is the consent ordinances. The next item on the agenda, oh, is the consent ordinances, first reading. It consists of three items, items B through D. Does any alderman wish to remove an item from the consent agenda ordinances? Seeing none, the chair declares in order for one motion to consider the ordinances. Okay. Consider the three ordinances in one motion without debate. Is there a motion?
Some of them.
Alderman Sunayka, Alderman O'Brien. So we got three ordinances here. First one, ordinance number 2100. Approve an ordinance confirming and extending the state of emergency within the City of Rolling Meadows due to COVID-19 pandemic. First reading. Item C, ordinance number 2100. Amend chapter 98 subdivisions of the City Code of Ordnances regarding recapture agreements. And then ordinance D, number 21-00. Amend chapter 38, environment of the City Code of Ordnances regarding abandoning gas The question is, shall the ordinances be moved forward for second reading? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Veneziano.
Yes.
Bessesi.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
Sunayka.
Yes.
Mikhail.
Yes.
Budmats.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Okay. We have unanimous vote on that. Moving on to new business. Okay. Item E, motion to approve payment of bills on warrants. 914.
Some of them.
Alderman Budmats, Alderman O'Brien. Oh, there we go. Is it, okay, we got the motion. Is there any discussion? Okay. Seeing none, the question is, shall the warrant be approved? The clerk please call the roll.
Bessesi.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
Sunayka.
Yes.
Mikhail.
Yes.
Budmats.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Veneziano.
Yes.
Okay. We have unanimous vote on that. Next is the consent resolutions. Next is the consent resolution. It consists of seven items, items F through I. Does any alderman wish to remove any items on the consent agenda for resolutions? Okay. Seeing none, the chair declares in order to, in order for one motion to be considered, consider the resolutions in one motion without debate. Is there such a motion?
Some of them.
Alderman Sunayka, Alderman Budmats. Okay. Here we go. Item F is a resolution number 21R80. Establish date and time for Halloween 2021. Item G is resolution number 21R81. Approve amendment with...
Agreement.
Oh, there we go. Approve agreement with UNICOD to provide a legal review of Rolling Meadows Code of Ordnances. Item H, resolution number 21R82. Award a contract to perform sanitary and storm sewer manhole lining rehabilitation. Item I, resolution number 21R83. Authorize change order number one to the contract for pavement paint striping services and... rescindling? Is that right?
Rescind.
Of resolution, oh, and rescinding, of resolution number 21R37 for the thermoplastic painting contract. Resolution, you know, number J is resolution number 21R84. Award a contract for the supply and installation of two HVAC split units located at City Hall. Item K is resolution number 21R85. Award a contract for Phase 2 engineering design services required for water main extensions at the following proposed locations. Theda Lane to Emerson Avenue, Ashland Avenue to Emerson Avenue, Golf Place to Lewis, and East Frontage Road to Sunset Park. Resolution, or item L is resolution number 21R86. Approve an intergovernmental agreement with the Village of Arlington Heights for the new Wilkie and Algonquin intersection improvement project. The question is, shall the resolutions be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Reyes.
Yes.
Sunayka.
Yes.
Mikhail.
Yes.
Budmats.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Veneziano.
Yes.
Bessesi.
Yes.
Seven in favor, none opposed. Those all pass as well. On to other business. There are no mayor appointments, no proclamations. City clerk's report?
None tonight.
Okay. On to city staff reports, community items of interest.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. City council, good evening. Community items of interest for tonight, we have several. Thank you to all the volunteers who helped out at the senior lunch on Tuesday, September 7th. The Rolling Meadows Community Events Foundation hosted the annual senior lunch at the community center. The afternoon was filled with great food sponsored by the Stadium Restaurant, raffle prizes and good times. More than 85 seniors attended the event held at the Park District's community center. Thank you to city staff and community events volunteers who participated in the final Friday Rock held on Friday, September 10th. The night included the annual duck race to help raise funds to support conservation projects in Rolling Meadows. We look forward to a great year next year. A big thank you to Meadows Cruise Nights hosted and located at Meadows Christian Fellowship parking lot, 2401 Kirchhoff Road. They host a great, they hosted a great season, and we look forward to seeing everyone next year. The next city market is scheduled this Saturday, September 25th, from 10 a.m., or next Saturday, September 25th, from 10 a.m. to 2 p.m. at Community
Item K is resolution number 21R85, award a contract for Phase II engineering design services required for water main extensions at the following proposed locations, Theda Lane to Emerson Avenue, Ashland Avenue to Emerson Avenue, Golf Place to Lewis, and East Frontage Road to Sunset Park. Resolution, or item L is resolution number 21R86, approve an intergovernmental agreement with the village of Arlington Heights for the new Wilkie and Algonquin intersection improvement project. The question is, shall the resolutions be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Reyes?
Yes.
Sunoika?
Yes.
McHale?
Yes.
Budmats?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Beniziano?
Yes.
Bessesi?
Yes. Seven in favor, none opposed, votes all pass as well. On to other business. There are no mayor appointments, no proclamations. City clerk's report?
None tonight.
Okay, and the city staff reports, community items of interest?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. City council, good evening. Community items of interest for tonight, we have several. Thank you to all the volunteers who helped out at the senior lunch on Tuesday, September 7th. The Rolling Meadows Community Events Foundation hosted the annual senior lunch at the community center. The afternoon was filled with great food sponsored by the Stadium Restaurant, raffle prizes, and good times. More than 85 seniors attended the event held at the Park District's Community Center. Thank you to city staff and community events volunteers who participated in the final Friday Rock held on Friday, September 10th. The night included the annual duck race to help raise funds to support conservation projects in Rolling Meadows. We look forward to a great year next year. A big thank you to Meadows Cruise Nights hosted and located at Meadows Christian Fellowship parking lot, 2401 Kirchhoff Road. They host a great, they hosted a great season, and we look forward to seeing everyone next year. The next city market is scheduled this Saturday, September 25th, from 10 a.m., or next Saturday, September 25th, from 10 a.m. to 2 p.m. at Community Church, 2720 Kirchhoff Road. The September newsletter can be found on the city's website at www.citirm.org. Just click on the News and Views tab. Please shop, dine, and order in Rolling Meadows. It is more important than ever during these times. We do have a retail and restaurant incentive. It will be, it is posted on the city's website now, and we're making posters as well and signs across the community. Something that Martha Corner can be contacted at for information, area code 847-870-9044. The Business and Community Showcase is coming up next Thursday, September 23rd, a week from this Thursday, at Meridian Banquets and Conference Center at 1701 West Algonquin Road, from 4 p.m. to 8 p.m. The B2B, or Business to Business Meet and Greet is from 4 p.m. to 5 p.m., and from 5 p.m. to 8 p.m. is when the showcase opens up to the community. It's a great way to get to know businesses in a casual atmosphere and learn a little bit more about the city. The Hometown Hoedown Fall Fest will take place on Saturday, October 2nd, at the Kimball Hill Park, from 12 p.m. to 5 p.m. Come out and enjoy this family-friendly activity and fall fun. Do you have a crime tip or information that may help Rolling Meadows Police? Please be sure to contact Rolling Meadows Crime Stoppers at area code 847-590-7867, or 847-590-stop. Just looking ahead to September committee meetings, of course, Alderman O'Brien had mentioned the EDC meeting that took place last night. The upcoming Capital Projects Committee is scheduled for September 28th at this point in time, and that currently there are three items, or two items that are on the agenda relating to the Annual Street Program and the Rebuild Illinois Ponds. And those are the community items of interest this week.
Thank you. We'll now move on to fiscal, fiscal 2022 proposed budget distribution. I'm pretty much manager, Gallagher.
Thank you very much. City council and for residents who are listening at home, we have released the budget for 2022, is the 2022 proposed annual budget. At this point in time, I'll make just a couple footnotes on that. We did post it to the city's website today, under the Transparency tab. In the packet tonight, we also have the Budget Planning Calendar, and there will be a couple different additions when we present next week, because we only, right now, presented the main components of the budget plus the general fund. So if you open it up, you're just going to see those main components and the general fund. We're going to do the final wrap-up. Departments and I are working on the final pieces this week. So we've released the majority of the budget tonight. What I wanted to mention, the city did receive the 2020 Budget Award, we were just notified in the last week, from the Government Finance Officers Association, and very proud of that award. The budget does continue to operate under uncertainty, but we have been operating this way and also successfully as well. You will see that a lot of the revenues are flat, or they have slightly increased, so there is some improvements to some of the revenue sources across the board. But we are also tempering things to make sure that we are fiscally sound, with keeping an eye on all of our reserves. This budget, while if you do recall, that we did present to you the budget parameters back in June of this year, and those budget parameters did have a property tax levy increase of 2%. That property tax levy has been reduced to zero, so there is no property tax proposed currently in the budget. The reason for that is that we were able to look at the actuarial reports and make sure that the actuarial dollars that were presented in that were covering the entire actuarial amount, and balance that out between police fire and IMRF, the non-union. In addition to that, we also will review that next week with you as well, and present that at the committee of the whole meeting. There are no utility rate increases in the budget, so water, sewer, stormwater, and refuse remain the same rates as this budget in 2021. So for 2022, there are no rate increases. We are continuing our capital improvement program, however. As you recall, there were some things that were deferred in previous budget, but we were able to make sure that we're including those items for this year, continuing our capital improvements program. What's important about this budget, it does stay within fund balance parameters. So our general fund, at this point in time, is showing about a 27% fund balance, which indicates about $9.3 million of reserves in the general fund. We're way above the, we're in the middle of the parameter. If you recall, that the general fund operates within about a 15% to 30% parameter. For 2022, we're looking at 27%. We're estimating for 2021 about a 31% fund balance. Over the last five years, we've been averaging about 31% to 32% fund balance for every year end for general fund. I think that's really important to know going in, that this budget does continue a lot of status quo items. We did have some small changes, and we'll discuss more when we come up to the committee of the whole meeting next week. And that's really the introduction for this evening, and we'll talk more next week.
Thank you. Next up, we got the August Traffic Review Report. Director Horn?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Not a lot to report from our last meeting, just a few minor issues. We had a concern brought to our attention regarding the need for signage in a certain subdivision on the west side of town. That resident is working with the chief of police to evaluate whether there is a need to add signage. There's also, in the similar location, there is a, was a line of sight issue on Silent Brook and Quentin Road. We are working with the homeowner who is actually considering removing all of the trees that are causing the line of sign issues, so we are, we are kind of working with that homeowner right now. We also plan on making some traffic marking revisions to that location to provide better line of sight. And lastly, just to bring to the council's attention, staff did provide a laundry list of items to the state of Illinois to add to their bid, bridge replacement program that's coming up in the next several years, primarily to clean up some of the areas. However, one of the locations proposed, actually, part of a discussion with the Environmental Committee, was the potential to provide a bike path connection where one of the tributaries to Salt Creek passes under Route 53. We had several conversations with the state regarding that. Unfortunately, we were not able to get them to budge on that issue, so we are proceeding without that connection, but we did make a valiant effort to try and get that done. So those are the updates I have from the August Traffic Review Committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Horn. Next, we got the September 21, 2021 Committee of the Whole Agenda.
Thank you, City Council and Mayor Protem. For September 21st next week, the Committee of the Whole Agenda, we have nine items currently. We may change the order depending on when we have speakers. So we've got, right now, Meet Chicago Northwest, the Pumpkin Disposal Program Initiative, the 2022 boat, the proposed budget, COVID-19 in the city, some of the lessons learned on that, and so we'll be working on that and giving that an update to the city council. The 2022 Community Events, 2022 Street Program, the Holiday Lighting Update, the American Rescue Act Plan Update, and then the Emergency Angel Fund Parameters, and I want to just footnote that, that Dr. Neves will be present as well, and we may be changing the name based on some of the suggestions that the chief and Dr. Neves has provided as well. So those are the nine items for September 21st.
Thank you. Move on to September 28th, City Council Draft Agenda.
Thank you very much. For September 28th, we'll have a couple additions. I'm going to go through the agenda, though. First off, this is kind of a fun thing, Public Works Award Presentation, the Art Contest Banner winner, and that will be very great to present. We also have the public hearings for the library tax levy and the city tax levy. Under ordinances under pending, we have the state of emergency for COVID-19, the approved tax amendment for the recapture agreement terms, and the approve abandoned gasoline station ordinance. Under consent ordinances, we have COVID-19 pandemic, the gas station at 2020, approved special use amendment for gas station at 2020, 20200 Algonquin, approve an ordinance approving a recapture agreement for 2800 Brockway. We have the warrant, and then under consent resolutions, we have four items. We have the award professional design engineering services contract for the 2022 road resurfacing project, a resolution to, for the engineering services contract for the reconstruction project for 2022. We have the award Phase II land acquisition for Algonquin and New Wilkie Resolution, and a resolution to accept public utility for 2800 Brockway. Under Businesses and Reports, I'll get to that in a second, I did want to mention that we'll have two additional items. As mentioned at EDC from last night, we have the Marketplace Burke Engineering Proposal for the greening of that area, and also some improvements, so that will be a resolution brought to city council for approval. And then pending, an additional item that we may have from the Park District, as I mentioned to Alderman McHale, there's a Park District item that will be brought forward with, for city council approval as well. Under Other Businesses and Reports, we have the community items of interest, the new business list, and then the draft agenda for October 12th, and closed session items. And that concludes the 28th agenda.
Thank you. Next, we are, are there any matters not on the agenda? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to closed session. For purposes of land sales, I'm assuming I read the whole thing. Land sales, 5 ILCS, 120-2C6 of the Illinois Open Meetings Act, the setting of price and sale or lease of property owned by the public body, pending litigation, 5 ILSC, 120-2C11 of the Illinois Open Meetings Act, to consider litigation when an action against the public body has been filed and is pending before a court or administrative tribunal, or personnel, 5 ILCS, 120-2C1 of the Illinois Open Meetings Act, to consider the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of a specific employee of the public body or legal counsel for the public body, including hearing testimony on the complaint lodged against the employee or the public body, oh, employee of the public body, or against legal counsel for the public body to determine its validity. There is a request to go into open session. It does require a motion and a roll call vote. Do I have a motion?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Beniziano and Alderman Budmats. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Sunoika?
Yes.
McHale?
Yes.
Budmats?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Beniziano?
Yes.
Bessesi?
Yes.
Reyes?
Yes.
Okay, the audience and press are advised that we do not anticipate taking any action upon returning to open session. Is there a motion to adjourn? No, no motion to adjourn, okay.
No, yes.
We're adjourned.
No, yes.